Excuse me. Um, 442 A Lincoln Street, Barnabas U. No, I'm just asking you the favor. There's a lot of sitting people here and most likely senior and some people have a language barrier. So every one of you please speak a little louder and clearly and use your own microphone. Quick.
Yes.
Doesn't matter trans. We have a in popular here, but we need someone who, anybody who is your statement, I need to clearly understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Very good.
So on introduction this evening, there's no point in participation this evening. It'll be a public hearing April 26th at 5:00. It'll be at that time that the public can have any say on this year's budget. It's still in progress, but we can apply to state on introduction since we are now in cap and all other statutes that are applicable to the budget. On a first go around, we're looking at approximately $114 increase. The majority of that increase is going to be on garbage removal. We're still going through the digits that came in today and yesterday. We're finishing them up literally tomorrow. So with that said, I appreciate your support on introduction only for the budget for this year.
I have a question. I believe when we are setting up our annual budget, actually the process has to start from sometime in October. And we need to get every department's report on their execution of annual budget, whether that was well used, they had lack of money, where there is a surplus, and for the next year's plan, at least one year plan with their tests and programs, and how much more money or less money were allowed to inform safety. And have you received all the department's reports?
Yes. So Dave, Austin, and myself and Gina, we start actually in October as you just said. We do a three-year process, David. So the biggest thing we do is to try to capture as low as possible. And of course, there will be some increases that are out of our control. And this year's at control will be the actual garbage contract that was big and... I'm sorry. And of course, the revenue shortfalls that we all experienced with the COVID in the last two years. So the American Rescue Plan will help in our, in our plan here to keep the tax as low as possible.
And thank you. You mentioned because of the COVID, everybody suffered. And our living cost has really almost doubled, right? Once you go to the supermarket, you will find much less items and the price went up. Yesterday, I went to shopping and usually they could post me only $100. I had to pay $200. I was really, really surprised. And I said, okay, just we're gonna have a meeting once a week now. And we will review what we're eating. Is there any possible way that we have no raised tax this year? Because of the COVID, everybody's really living in, you know, such a hardship. So if there's any way, because we cannot, we cannot, as a household woman, we cannot do exact same thing like years before by spending same amount of money. So I'm wondering, you know, just this year, if we all have our belts tightened? So because I keep a regular condition throughout the whole year when we are facing much more hardship, financial difficulty, every household.
So with that said, Mayor, let's stop. So at this point, to answer your question is, Councilwoman, we have cut this budget to a point where we were in tax levy cap. We were not last month. There is no other cut to do except layoffs, which the manager, BA, has said under his watch. There'll be no layoff of anyone as long as we can support the budget. That would be the only other way you can possibly get rid cap and actually devastate the tax base.
So then we represent, you know, our extra spendings in lawsuits and, you know, giving out money for this and that. So 60%. That should be many times. All right. I'm done. Thank you. And also, you know, the department's plan should be all open to the residents. So they'll have to know.
Yes. Yes.
Send to the council a report of all the items, about lying items, which are not in place. In fact, I just issued a two-fold file for their review so that their respective departments and their budgets are properly discussed with the council. And they may further look into the budget. Okay. Testings of what are taxes going to be this year? 114 now. However, we're still working on this budget. We're trying to even get a further deduction. But we just got hit hard today, yesterday, the deduction contract, the four auto pair. And we're working on trying to even reduce further. We had another $300,000 that we have to find.
So $114 this year was their average rate before COVID, because she has a good point that because our people are suffering because of COVID, inflation is going up.
So what I will do for the next May, I will get to the tax increase the last five years. Because the majority increase is your school portion, followed by your municipal, followed by your county. We don't need the five years. We don't need the five years back time. Just get us the detail, this one could review. That's it. So that everyone has an input to it so they can't say they didn't have any input or didn't have any part in it. Got them up. That's it. Good? Thank you. Now we need to move on. All right.
And Mayor, can we discuss about agenda?
Yeah. She's gonna open the public session now. Can I get a motion to open the, um, the session to the public? Okay. As I asked you before, please, we have a lot of people here, so everyone will be allowed three minutes to speak. Yeah. One turn and make sure you ask a couple questions.
I did not find a new student properly. The 114 increase as a right man does not include the school budget?
No, it doesn't.
It does.
That's just the municipal portion.
Okay. And we don't know when we will know what portion, so it could conceivably.
It will be higher than the county, the library, the school. As it changes now.
My name is Yvonne One New, 268 Highland Avenue. Before I start, I realized that today is the special council's birthday. My, uh, my first question, I have several questions. My first question is Resolution 108. Uh, it says additional measures and recommendations of this special council. Uh, I'd like to direct my question to Council King. Could you explain what is this additional, you know, measures and recommendations?
All the questions should be addressed to me and to the, uh, chair. And the mayor just saw I took you there.
Uh, so I'd like to know what are the additional measures and recommendations? When I submit a request about this special council report, it says that they cannot provide, uh, that report because of our client, you know. So I think who are the, who is the client? I think probably, you know, the government body representing us. So we are the client. So I really like to request that Councilman Mayor make this report available to the public. But my next question is Resolution 90, which is a past, at the last meeting, uh, remaining, which is about a new package for me. I believe it affects the efficiency of the first. However, when I look at that, there are a lot of these processes that might concern. For example, where is that process in P? Also, we didn't know about that. And secondly, privacy law. I didn't ask them about this. They didn't concern. According to I T S, contracts with the, you know, borough. Borough is basically can access our personal data without my consent. That's a violation of privacy law. So those are things really should be serious this way. So I'd like to request Mayor and Council to postpone this effect date in that.
But why can't they pay the same thing? That's not fair, right?
My next question is, I am raising to separate, I hold the working session and regular meeting separate to date. And at the last meeting, Mr. Scatting says there is no other city. He's not aware of any other city who does it.
No, that's not true. I didn't say that.
Let us speak. Let us speak. I believe.
No, I don't like when someone disclaims.
And so it takes me, it took me a month to miss out on your contact, okay? So Leonia, I checked on Leonia. Leonia has a regular meeting every other month. The other, every other month, they do working sessions. So it's a separate meeting. Now, ultimately, yeah, ultimately, in March, March 3rd, they have a working session. Their regular meeting is on March 34th. So if we, our mayor in town does it, why not us? That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Thomas Yu.
Your address, don't you say it in that.
Thomas Yu, City Attorney, Attorney. First, on March 231, the State Controller issued a report on the borough's management and the renovation of the action for the borough's DA. Borough officer found the investigation coming by the councilwoman, Miss Steng. Left on a march for three months investigation. The comment announced at the house, noting that there was only a possible $538 issue of tax money instead of the state control for the border $500,000 issue of bond. In December 2020, DA Mr. Ed Kevick, the current board of the, renewed another $500,000. Who has a lot of problems, yes, state, state control report. My question is, why is not open investigation of the, I must see, I don't know that. Second, why doesn't file Mr. Dean Lorret? Why him? Second, a police officer issued the $120,000 settlement against the player. He was bullied by a superior officer, who had a text with a chopstick and a chopstick with a tie. In his last, he alleged that he had hindered his personal development with him while he was good. He continued driving his daughter to school every morning. My boroughs had to pay this $120,000 to the ex-papa, police officer, Sean McGinn, last month. My question is, why would pay him this settlement? This is a personal error. Second, our second lawsuit has been filed against the borough and its police department. This was in retaliation and obvious powers. The police, George Bell, filed a complaint, so for the officer, certainly in 2019. George Bell believed illegal and against the department. Loser of hurting the taxpayer in the rural and district in the South. My recommendation is, we never agree with them to pay, to be able to court because this is personal error, personal error. And of course, police do not defuse more than 50,000 due to the population increase.
If you're exceeding the three minutes, you have to come to the booth.
I didn't know that the meeting is limited to me. This is, I checked for my home, this is forcing the home in.
You can finish, finish, finish where you can wait till the other time when it opens up and you can just continue. Because the meeting opens up again for the public.
The next time, I could drop three minutes. But this, this time, I mean, this is a particular, you know, in the home, check the home.
Go ahead. Go ahead and finish your comments. Go ahead.
Okay, so the police do not view any more difference how the population increase. Our borough population density is about 10,000 people, 10,000 population per square mile is very, very high. The population increase, the current program, current, like decrease. There was a part of space, that floor, 38, 10, 10 seasons. There will be no grass on the state. Why is the difference house builder? Who's difference builder? I understand that David Lorret, you know, right? I'm sure he make another money. You, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, Councilman, you are the representative of the voter. You are not a person of the Democrat, of course not. And of course, you are not a person in power group. About 20,000 borough voters are watching from behind with big eyes. You will receive a report from the reason and, and, and of your tons. Please cancel the lights, the country, the election. That's the only common opinion that we have. For many, it is very difficult for the young boys to climb the income. Many people are suffering emotionally due to the current pandemic. Me, in the side, have the hands that I still have in the election. You are the regular open meeting of our power. Police return to original, we can save the PM. Why, I don't know. Otherwise, it's correct to ask, why do it to 5:00 PM? Finally, police create a small, with clean city government, to reduce tax overregulation. Thank you for listening to me.
Anyone else? Yes.
Alvin Lee, 466. Mayor Chong, you want the town oversight committee? Mayor Chong, no. Alvin Lee, 466. Alvin Lee, 466, Lee, 466.
Good. Yeah. Thank you.
Mayor Chong, you want the town oversight committee and the town, town had only misused $538. However, looking at the announcement in the newspaper every day, it says that you will improve and investigate the problems in the town. These issues have persisted for two and a half years and there are only six months remaining in your town. How do you plan in solving these challenges? That's my question.
Hi, my name is Su Chang, 277 St. Robert Avenue. I have, uh, my first question is about regarding the parking permits. I got this, um, papers from somebody who participated, uh, who joined the meeting in March regarding this parking permit. And I got, so I think it's kind of the last version that I heard about parking rules. I just wonder, it really made me sorry as the full vote is kind of light and warning. And I don't think they understood what they're saying about it. It's probably, um, it's a critical level. At least I have your details and then it doesn't really make sense. And for example, that who, in this report, that what, the, the, who registered for their, uh, guest parking? Is visitors or guests? Can you answer me now? Because as soon as they know all the residents that I speak.
Are you asking who should register for the visitor parking?
Right.
Yeah. It could be the resident homeowner or the visitor themselves.
For some of them.
Either one.
Either one. Either one, or anybody. Okay. Then so, this is a kind of, so how do you reach to the residents with all these details and technicalities on the rules and regulations parking permit? Like if we don't read the newspapers and things, is there any way that you have planned to reach out to the residents to be aware of any details of this parking permit? So, because I've got a lot of questions in, even on the street. If somebody recognize me that asks about parking permit, I have no answer to them. And I'm very, very harassed about to knowing this kind of papers. So please be specific and please be precise in details and then let all the residents look in clear way. My second one is the one, the oversight committee report that I know they even know with the reason of the artwork class. Probably is it, I think we need to know about, um, that report in hotel. And so I'm asking you to open it publicly because it's about the wrongdoing of the public worker that I think we have right to know and read. And then my last one is that I'm in school now, so I, um, I just, uh, experience a very, uh, discomfort going, big going and back, going back and forth to the office. And the construction has been occurred since last September, 27 months. And I wonder what's the, what's that has to be, to be delayed is long. Although it's a little more size, it's not a massive construction. And even if it's related to the toxic environmental safety, toxic issues that we really need to be alert. And then, so now I know that this is our, our company is constructive, it's our energy. I think it's in the space. So could you, that was, keep, keep us posted day by day schedule, what they do in this site? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we keep this to three minutes as intended?
Yes.
Please.
Marshall Shaw, Indian Avenue. Approximately, how much money parking meters bring into this town, the Laura's past?
Parking meters?
Well, the meters also, yeah, because the meters are not really counted as income now, are they?
They can answer questions after they close. They answer all the questions they want.
Oh, and also, I don't think this town should be compared to any other town. We are what we are and comparing us to Fort Lea, Leon, you know, that other stuff, doesn't make difference.
Thank you.
My name is Young Min Jung, 50 East Palace Boulevard. Number one, a very practical request. I also totally agree with Mr. Thomas Yu that our regular sessions or work session time before the pandemic, uh, you know, 7:00 PM would be best. I know like 5:00 PM, even just many, I know, like, resident participants here, I'm very surprised. But we just feel like, uh, we just like request move to 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That is my, my number one. And the number two is also, I just totally agree about this Matthew Giacobi's report. So I, as a resident, concerned about, uh, you know, Controller's Office report and then Oversight Committee. Uh, I, I, I heard last year, October, uh, you know, the paper, report was submitted to Palisades Park. So I really want to know about this one. And it is said, you know, this is like the employee employment agreement for municipal administrators here. Um, like last year, uh, 2021, uh, December 1st. And it is said, Section 7 termination, employee may be terminated by a unanimous board of the full government body, full course. But like, uh, Jersey State Controller's Office said regarding his employment being terminated only by a unanimous board of the governing bodies unlawful. The borough should not comply with that provision and going forward should decline entirely into any contract that violate NJSA 4089-138. I want to know about this is, you know, State Controller's Office is correct? Or how come like Matthew Giacobi spent one year and how he reported? So I really wanted to see, as a concerned resident, to see the report. So that is my next request. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Um, I have a few question. Um, Mary P. Potter, 444 Glen Avenue. Uh, the first question is regarding the pool, I know it's, uh, season is coming out. And last year, I have a comment about that it was a lot of resident complaint that it was only cash. Uh, I would like to know if this year it's gonna be a different way to do a formal payment beside cash. And another question is, I've been here a lot on the Giacobi report and I would like to see a public also, we've been asked for an offer and it's been denied for the public. And we need to know what is in there. Yes, and now, another thing I'm gonna say, it's been very disrespectful that I've seen because we record that and then we see it at home, how the councilmen, some of the councilmen, if you like, I will give a name, how disrespectful they are when we say something they do not agree with. How you like talk to each other and look at us like that. That's very disrespectful. And you should not be like that because we here as a resident and we have the right to ask. Another thing I'm gonna ask is about the parking, um, issue there. There is not clear. I haven't registered our card. But I just found out that you have to pay a fee for the register. And that wasn't clear in the, um, information that you guys provide. So it has to be, be clear and writing, that way we don't get surprised. Because if it's a fee on, it should be in writing. Thank you.
Sorry, one second. First, then to you.
Okay, thank you. Mentioned some things are repetitious, but I, I want to mention it because, oh, I want to emphasize how concerned we are. The parking permit, um, is a concern I have because I did read a resolution that was sent to me. And thing that bothered me is I thought we all senior citizens were great and it said only two senior citizens per household. There was no mention of the times, uh, 9, it was 12:00 A.M. to 9:00 A.M. in that resolution when I looked at it, unless I'm looking at the wrong thing. I was a little concerned about that. There was no mention about how weekends this law or whatever will not be enforced. In fact, today, a friend of mine, I think came down to the Borough Hall or called the Borough Hall, I'm not sure if she came down. And she was told that even though she's a senior citizen, they want her to pay the fee of $20 and then would be refunded. And to me, I don't understand why it would have to be refunded. I would think you're making it more difficult, uh, you know, and, you know, about that. I think that's a little ridiculous that it would have to be refunded. So I'm a little concerned and I really believe that possibly, as someone else suggested, maybe we should postpone the enforcement of this until everything is clear that we can actually read the, all the rules and regulations. So everyone is familiar with it. The other area, uh, and I think it's being reversed tonight, Roth Avenue was switched two weeks ago. That bothers me a lot because two years ago, that was supposed to happen and it never happened. And when it did happen, it was supposed to be done on Bridge House. It was supposed to go all the way through to 46. The other day, it was switched the opposite way. And I went up to the D P W who's changing the signs. Of course, they have nothing to do with it, they just are told what to do. And what's, what's said is I live on the corner of Roth Avenue, I wasn't notified. It's very easy with that phone notification to receive a message and at least I would have called up somebody. The problem at my quarter is that there are always, for years, there were many accidents. People come from, uh, from the hill, up, up that little hill on Roth Avenue and there's always an accident there. Ironically, or is it ironic, that, um, last Thursday night, there was the first accident since it's changed. I'm glad they're switching it, but I think we should be told and it's easy with that notification on the phone to let us know. And I've been hearing a lot about, I think it's Giacobi report. This is bothering me that I know the, I, I know the control, even though he said everything in the controller report were lies, I don't believe it. There was a lot of truth to what was said. And apparently, it is investigated or whatever and we're not allowed to find out about it. I think as citizens, I want to know what's going on. And I think before anybody votes to approve that, the results, all of you should read the complete report exactly as it was written and I think we should know about it. And I would appreciate if you would do that. Thank you very much.
My name is Juan Kim, 466 Lincoln Street. Mayor Chang, during your term, there have been a number of lawsuits against the police department and it's my understanding that the town's made out over $1 million in lawsuits. Most recent cases involved allegations regarding the police captain and the head of the town. Additionally, there was a jailbreak two weeks ago, which potentially endangered the safety of our residents. So my question to you is, what do you hope to accomplish in the remainder of your term to address the issues around the police department? Thank you.
I just have one, Joseph Lozo, 85 West, that's the Boulevard, Cal State Square. Um, I just have a question about the Eighth Street change. It's going to be going, the opposite direction is going now from Calisade's all the way to Route 46 just about. I'm just, would like to know if it's going to stay this way or we're going to change it in another customer. I say, I, uh, it was, it was, it's a zoo down there with the way to the things are being changed and everything else. And it's never, and I, I've argued this point, it's got to be 18 years ago, 10 years ago when you just changed it to coming one way, going north. And I said, you've just made the life for anybody that has a child going to school at the high school impossible because you, we have three major roads that we can use to bring the children to school in one. And one of them happens to have been dropped if you made it one way going the wrong way. So you're doing something that I like that's going in the right direction, but I don't want to hear in three weeks that you're going to change it back on and split one block off again and make it a different direction. You know? I made this complaint, like I said. I say, yeah, it takes three years ago and it wasn't listened to. And please, make it right over there.
What can I hear?
Well, the county, the county of the board is, is a new client, county of the board, that's a public document. The, uh, the report prepared by the special counsel, uh, someone asked the question, who's applying? Applying is the governing body. That's who you represent. The attorney applying exists, privilege exists between the governing body and any attorney that works for the borough gives equal advice. Very unusual to release documents that contain their attorney applying privilege. It can be done, it's not recommended. Uh, but that's where the attorney applying privilege comes. In terms of meetings, it's incorrect. I never said that towns do not be on different nights. Towns leave, everybody does it different. Many towns do leave the same night. Some towns have two different meetings. There's no right or wrong. There's no legal requirement that it be done certain way. Uh, and that's how I answer the question. Whoever told you or if you know what I said, that nobody does it differently than Allison Clark, that's incorrect. The question that I asked the meeting was hoped to be accomplished by separating the meeting. The agenda is given out on Friday, people in the meeting, Turkish people Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and most of Tuesday to review the agenda and come up with whatever questions they want. And the work session that you're doing tonight is when you have the questions. The council believes that as a result of the discussion, actions should be taken, they have the right to table.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to make this into agenda that, uh, we should open this, uh, report to the public. And, uh, yeah, make a motion.
One other general comment because they were questioned specifically regarding individuals employed in the borough. You, as, as a citizen, you make whatever comment you want. The mayor council cannot respond or discuss personnel in public sessions. It's a violation of that individual's right. So you will, you will not hear any responses regarding specific individuals. In order for the governing body to discuss an individual, they have to give them a rice notice, which is a notice that tells them they're going to be discussed. And then that individual has that right to have it discussed in both sessions where the public is excluded or in public session. So again, anybody who had any questions regarding specific individuals, those questions legally cannot be answered. You have people concerned about lawsuits. All I have to do is generate another lawsuit and the borough would be wrong for having discussed that individual. Jumping ahead also to, I just want to point this out, I don't have any evidence, I've been talking about litigation. The, the habits have been paid out, but the borough hasn't paid out the entire amount. Most of that money is covered through insurance. Not that that makes it right or wrong, but I don't want people to think that all the settlements had been paid directly through the tax response. Most, overwhelming majority of it has been paid through the insurance company. And the insurance company, because they're the ones who are providing the coverage, they select the attorney and they make the recommendation. Every case that was settled by the borough was a result of the attorney that the insurance company, we all know insurance companies do not want to pay money. So it's not as if they're here, the insurance company saying, yeah, give everybody whatever they want. Their job is to pay as little as possible. So they select the attorney, which is their right. That attorney makes a recommendation to the insurance companies in what the case you settle. And the governing body, as most governing bodies almost always do, they follow the recommendation of the insurance company and the attorney representing the insurance company.
Can we address the lawsuits? Uh, there was a question, they could follow a question, I believe it's you, if you're under the aisle. Yes, this, lawsuits against the police department and, and, and we like fully, uh, the settlement which we addressed. The next question would be from, if you would, I believe, 466 Lincoln, uh, I think maybe, uh, response to the comment. Please make a move on. Number five is, I believe it's Su Chang from East Central Boulevard, specifics on the parking ordinance, the Oversight Committee and regarding the school board project. I could comment on the school board. Um, so the school board project here is being discussed in the front of the, uh, board building. It goes back to September. In September of last year, the school board office notified us that there was a clogged sewer line. And it turned out that the sewer line was in fact, so during the course of repairing the sewer line, it was, uh, there was a underground fuel stamp that was discovered and overlooked. We, we have stopped working on environmental, we have to take a process. We have no control over the state, we have no control over the transit trains and we have no control over how and where the sewers are being moved, how they're tested. But we do have control and have to, 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 to the environment remediation. And that process went on and actually, uh, from my own experience, uh, it was done relatively quickly. So I, I was over there today, I see many of you look back to normal, um, the way for another final test result to come back and talk about the case.
So what part is the state responsible for?
Yeah, so they have to, so, so, so the process is once you find the ten cessbury, the first thing is to identify where it came from. We don't know, we have no records in that building from state back 56 years. Uh, and then, then the process is you have to pull in a state through contractor. Uh, and they come in and they do testing to determine the provisions of what type of fuel will have the testing, will have the determination. That process generates a, a application of the state's condition, the state can compete otherwise to have proceed. You can only succeed with what you look for the license, L S R P, the license, you know, specials, they go for the series. Things that have to be done, certain contractors have to be taken care of, the wages have to be taken out, that we have to be taken during the state now. And then once they receive what they feel is a, uh, a, 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 a,